Stand up, round the day. Do the pledge and get this show on the road.
My fellow leaders, to the light of the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we call the May 8th, 2018 council meeting order. Council members present with the exception of John Mortensen. Attorney Rig, Ken here, Ryan, and Trader Allison. Citizens comments? Anyone want to address the council on anything not already on the agenda?
I didn't have an accident this time.
Very good.
That's worth commenting.
We should accept that as given and you wouldn't need to inform us.
Yeah, alright. I won't say that again though.
Okay.
Unless I do have another accident.
Any corrections or additions to the agenda?
Mayor, I have one addition to the agenda. It's been our new business G. Hiring at the M U E. Part-time bartender Savannah Smith.
Motion to accept the agenda as amended. So who?
Seconded.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Consent agenda. Is there anything that should be removed from the consent agenda or do we have a motion to accept that?
So who?
Seconded.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Presentations etc. There are none, so we get on to engineering, item seven. Joe, I and I investigation.
Thank you, Mayor. We've been working with Public Works Department reviewing data on a couple of things, on the mercury concentrations at the wastewater plant and also on the capacity of flow coming through the plant relative to the design capacity of the system itself. And we've been collecting that data and kind of plotting it and charting it and drawing some conclusions from that. And we then discussed with staff about some strategies for reducing I and I infiltration filtration, which is groundwater that gets into your pipes and also surface water that gets into your system and things such as sub pumps or roof drains that are connected to the sanitary sewer system rather than to a stormwater system.
And this has been going on for years.
Been going on for years.
Or is that continuing?
Yep, it's a continuing battle. Correct, yep. And the older your system gets, the more it becomes susceptible to that. So in discussing with the administrator and Public Works Director, we were thinking it probably time to just schedule a work session, sit down with the council and kind of go through this information and talk about strategies so that council starts to get an understanding of the situation and comfort level for, you know, what strategy do we want to start to pursue and how do you want to budget for that and how do you want to plan for moving forward, especially in regards to the I and I and starting to manage that or develop a strategy to manage that.
Can you give us a preview, a slight overview of what your strategies are for I and G?
Yeah, there's different strategies for going out. There's smoke testing where you can introduce artificial smoke into the lines.
And I think we've done that before.
So between that and then televising and then flow monitoring where you put electronic flow monitors actually down in the pipes, strategic locations and you can start to check. And then you can reposition those as you, you know, you started the junction manhole and you can start to tell, okay, we need to chase the system back up this direction or this direction. Start to identify where those higher concentrations of flows, you know, when a storm comes and when you get a rain event and all of a sudden the flow spikes, you know, okay, this pipe is reacting to rainfall rather than to the actual usage of sanitary sewer. So those would kind of be the three initial strategies that would be done in the short term. It would be combination of televising, smoke testing, and flow monitoring. And then there's some longer-term strategies that could be done as well. The initial goal would be to start to isolate the worst areas of the system so we can start to strategize for whether it's slip lining or pipe replacements or whatever needs to be done to start to reduce that.
There's some work that's been done on the system over the last few years that over here on Third Street, First Street presumably should have improved. Have you got any kind of a realistic idea? Has made a noticeable difference yet or?
Well, I mean, those pipes are very isolated pipes and not a lot of flow coming through them. What we want to look is the main lines, like the line that runs down by the river.
Right.
And then, you know, start to follow those branches up the system.
Some of these older pipes were replaced. You know, we're virtually certain that they were getting leakage coming in.
Yeah, because what happens is those older pipes, the jointing systems is typically where they'll fail. You know, that's where the, you know, you'll start to see the roots from the vegetation starting to get in those and when those roots can get in, the water can get in as well. And, you know, the current pipes, the PVC pipes with the water type joints do a much better job of preventing that leakage out of the joints. So those older systems though, and a lot of times you don't even necessarily replace those pipes, but if you've got older pipes where the joints are leaking, you can come through and line those pipes with a new polymer liner that will seal those joints to prevent the infiltration and you use the existing pipe as kind of the carrier for that liner. And so it's a cost-effective way without having to dig up the pipes to kind of renew that pipe and stop that infiltration. That's kind of a broad overview, but I mean, I think we're at the point where the administrator felt it was appropriate to schedule work sessions. We can have a little more in-depth discussion on.
We looked at different options.
Yep.
They're not all, you know, gaslit expensive things, but some stuff that we should probably start doing to, you know, look at. Some of it is citywide, some of it is specific to certain areas. It's not something we're going to be able to completely get rid of, but it's more like trying to cut down on it as much as, you know, start cutting down on it.
Okay, so initial short-term activities and then kind of some long-term strategies.
So at what point do we start approaching the break-even point where we do these and it cuts down on the infiltration and so on, or we do something to expand the plant so that it'll handle the extra amount?
Yeah, and that's.
There's got to be a trade-off there, right?
There is, yep. And that's the problem is when you're getting this clear water into your system, whether it's groundwater or whether it's surface water, you're paying, you're essentially paying to treat that water at your plant that doesn't want to be treated.
Right.
And, you know, when you get to the point where your plant exceeds its current capacity and needs an expansion, you know, you could be talking millions of dollars for plant expansions versus, you know, maybe tens of thousands of dollars for strategic efforts to lower that infiltration filtration. So definitely, definitely benefit to try and eliminate the problem at the source rather than treating it at the destination.
You don't really want to think about expanding your plant in terms of maximum daily flow. You want to do it in terms of average daily flow. And so you don't want to expand a plant based on infiltration because that infiltration is supposed to be, that's intended, not treated, but I mean corrected no matter what, even if you expand.
Yeah.
So it's, and every city, almost every system has some amount of this. I mean, we're certainly not, I mean, bad, maybe there's other cities are a lot worse than us probably, but I mean, we have enough that it's just one of these things that you want to start a plan and try to keep plugging away and make it better.
And the M P C A is the regulatory authority that issues your permit for you to own, operate, for you to operate your system that you own. And, you know, in that permit renewal cycle, which is every five years, you know, if you were to go to them and say, we want to expand our plant because we're exceeding our capacities, their comeback would be, well, have you gotten a handle on your I and I to make sure you're actually treating the flows that you need to be treating and not treating the clear water. So, you know, you'd need to assure them that you're doing what you, you know, those maintenance activities and housekeeping activities that you're doing before you expand your plant.
And that infiltration, that not actually, where you're in treatment, it's still increasingly hard accountable being used.
Absolutely.
Not only expensive, but makes it difficult to keep the affluent in the range that it needs to be.
Yeah, it all is interrelated.
Do you have, excuse me, did you have some kind of schedule in mind for when you would like to do this work session?
I was wondering about the week. Well, either probably the week, you know, Memorial Day, there's a week of the 28th. So I don't know, mid to the Wednesday, Thursday's that week or possibly the first week of June. It's not really date sensitive so much, I don't think.
No.
But we would like to sort.
Yeah, sometime after Memorial Day, I would imagine.
Why don't you set up a date after Memorial Day that week and email everybody and?
Okay, go from there.
Yep, the only thing I've got going at this point is Wednesday of the following week, the 6th of June.
Wade, what is it? I brought this thing on. At that meeting, for that work session, what other thing were we going to talk about?
You're organized.
Related to this.
In that way at this time.
Oh, but don't tell her. He said to work yourself.
Right.
All right, well, yeah, we'll figure it out.
So you guys, I'm sure that's what you were doing out here. A week and a half ago.
Yeah.
Maybe Wednesday, Thursday that week.
Yep. Sounds like we'll coordinate market of staff level and availabilities and then we can.
Dark at 6:00 or 7:00.
No, the week before.
No.
No, Joe.
Well, Fred just had said the week of Memorial Day is like an hour, so.
Right after Memorial Day.
Are you talking about first week of June?
Yeah, first week of June.
Okay.
That would be the 6th or 7th.
Yep, 6th or 7th.
I don't know when it's here, Thursday.
Yeah, okay.
And my preference of that would be Thursday.
I assume you're talking sometime in the middle of the week, like 5:30, 6:00, 6:30 or something.
We have thought.
Well, but then like says, we just always get that worked out.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sounds like we'll coordinate the staff level and then we can contact council and make sure that we're through with that.
So then we can move on to the Centennial Drive paving project.
Yeah, at the last council meeting, we had talked about, and at a work session before the last council meeting, we had talked about getting improvements done to Centennial Drive. And the main goal of the improvements is to get the pavement, to get that road upgraded from gravel pavement from the highway down to where the pavement currently ends, if you come around the corner there. And we talked at the last council meeting, you had provided a direction for us to work with Public Works Director so that we could come together with some guidance document that we could provide to the contractors so that when they provide us with, when we request quotes, that they're all working off the same types of pavement that we want, the same thicknesses, the same width, all of those things so that we're getting apples-to-apples comparison. So we did meet with the Public Works Director, we did a pretty thorough field review of the site and we put together some documents that are attached in your packet and I've got a little cover now to kind of walk you through those documents. Essentially, as I mentioned, the main goal is to get the road paved. There are some other related improvements that we're recommending for the road. Primarily, it's to get some shallow ditches constructed on the south side of the road, the fold craft side of the road so that that drainage is handled a little better, it puts washing across the roadway. So there's a little bit of ditching that would be done there. There's a couple of spots about 100 or 20 feet long plus or minus in two locations where we actually shift the road north a couple of feet to allow those ditches to be able to build.
I'm wondering how you're going to find room for a ditch in there.
Yeah, so do a little excavation and shift that road north a little bit. When you stand on the north side of the road and look down, it doesn't, the edge of that road kind of jogs back and forth, so we kind of get that all lined up and shifted a little bit further north so we can get those ditches squeezed in. There is a little bit of drainage work and a culvert that needs to be replaced, a storm sewer structure that's got the wrong type of top on it right now, so we get that upgraded. And then there's the area of the old trailer court that continually washes down at the corner. And there's a real problem with gravel washing out right now onto the roadway. We're concerned that if we just simply pave the road and don't address that at all, that that water coming down will start to undermine that pavement at the corner and we'll wind up eroding and then we'll wind up losing our pavement there. So what we're proposing is to construct a concrete valley gutter, a pan gutter, that we can bring up on the, be the west side of the road and extend it up into that trailer court to direct that water to and pick that water up so that it gets into gutter and gets into the storm sewer before it can get under the edge of our pavement and start eroding that pavement.
I'm not sure where the exact property line is there, but it's my impression that a lot of that gravel is coming off of property that the old grab owns.
I'm assuming a lot of the ditch work, the culvert work would be assessed to the full graph, right? And you talk to them to find out exactly how.
That's what we're trying to get set up. We've talked to the maintenance manager at the plant and then we had a, we have a call-in that I have not got to call back to the CEO and the plant manager who are in Burnsville. So they haven't gotten back to me, but Wade and I have talked to the maintenance manager so he's aware of what's going on or what's going to be going on there. So we want to keep plugging away with that and hope we can get a meeting set up with them so we can.
So we're not going to take any action until we really know exactly what the city is at the day the full graph's going to play, plus the July or the August 1st.
Yeah, I think that comes into play, yeah, with the discussion because what happened was with the improvements that we, that we kind of all agreed on that it should be made, we then went to, we put together a little plan sheet that we included in your packet. There's a one-page plan sheet that we provided the contractor along with a two-page little specification that kind of identifies, this is the strength of concrete you should use, this is the type of the two-minute mixture you should use. And then we gave them a little actual little form that they could fill out to submit their quote. We've got 19 items that we were paid by the unit price so that if we decide we need a little more ditching or a little less ditching or a little more concrete, we've got the ability to make those minor changes in the field and we have prices built in to do that. Once we got those documents put together, we went ahead and put together a cost estimate. And if you recall at the last meeting, we had talked about how the municipal contracting law allows you to get quotes up to $100,000. Once you get over $100,000 of construction cost, you're required to go out for, to advertise and open up for competitive bidding. Well, the cost estimate we came up with was $102,300.
Just over.
Just over.
Excuse me for interrupting. What is the cost of going out for bids as opposed to just getting quotes? Is it considerably more or?
Yeah, it takes more work because now we've got it put together rather than this little quote document. We've got to put together formal plans, formal bidding documents, and we've got to go through the advertising and the newspaper and the trade publications and.
Some of this would be stormwater control of really full craft should be partially responsible for.
But the problem is, it's based on the value of the construction contract. So if we let a contract for $102,000, even if fold craft's paying $20,000 of that or $10,000 of that, it's still, it's the value of the contract that dictates the contracting procurement requirements. But then the other thing with the bidding is that would take some time because we'd have to authorize us to do plan specifications, we'd have to get them ready, bring them back, we'd have to approve them, authorize for the advertising. All that would take some time.
Yeah.
But what happened is just by coincidence, because we were talking out there on the site and it's like, you know, they're reading to update this municipal contracting law because it's been this $100,000 threshold for forever. And literally that day, we got a bulletin from the League of Minnesota Cities that a law had been introduced to update the threshold. And checking on that last week, and I included a copy of the article in your packet, as of last Monday, I guess it would have been April 30th, they were reporting that the law had been passed and had been signed by the governor and will go into effect on August 1st, that increases that threshold to $175,000. So you can get now quotes up to $175,000. So by the time we went through the effort of putting together bidding documents, advertising, getting the bids, bringing it back to you, would essentially be out to the point where we'd be in the, you know, middle of July anyways. So at that point, we could just wait and get quotes and.
May not be ready before that anyway.
Right. And, yeah, so where we are is, the option right now is you could proceed, you could direct us to put together bidding documents because we are estimating over $100,000 right now and the law says over $100,000 as of now you have to bid. So you could direct us to do that, but I don't think there's much benefit in doing that. There's no benefit.
I don't think you make enough of it the way it is.
Yeah, but you could try and reduce the scope of the project to get it under $100,000 and go ahead now, but then you wouldn't get all the improvements.
Correct.
So I think the third option, which is really the one we recommend, is leave the scope of work as we've identified it, but just recognize that the law's going to change on August 1st. So we can actually get quotes and bring those quotes back to you after August 1st and then you could award the contract and get it done. I mean, the work is probably a couple of weeks' worth of work. So if they started in the middle of August, they can still easily get it done while you've got favorable weather conditions during this construction season. So there's really no drawback in just sitting tight.
See BMI's quote from last year, August of last year. So that could be upgraded, that could be a change in that too.
Yeah, yep. And I put that in for reference because, yeah, we're estimating right now $102,300. They had quoted $82,600. And the main differences was they didn't anticipate putting any gravel on the road up. They were just going to basically shake off there and pave it. When we look at that road, what happens with gravel over time is all fine material gets worn away. And so you wind up with really kind of a marbly gravel that's really not the same as the gravel we would put down for a road that we're going to pave. So we had anticipated coming and putting down the average of about two-inch thickness over the whole surface of the road. Plus, we want to get that road shifted a little bit to the north in a couple of key spots. And then we want to make sure we get a little gravel shoulder along the edges of the road so that we've got the edge of that pavement good and supported. So that's the primary difference between their quote of $82,600 and our estimate now of $102,000. The other thing is we're estimating about 50 ton more of blacktop than they did. And the price of blacktop from last summer to this summer has gone up a little bit because oil prices are starting to come up. So the bids we've seen so far this spring, the oil prices are higher than they were.
Have to go either way from here on.
Correct. And, you know, just, I did look back and I put it in your packages for reference as well. Back on December 31st of 2014, I had done an initial cost estimate for what was going to take to pay for Centennial. And I came up with a construction cost of $100,500. That compares to my $102,000 I've come up with now, so pretty consistent with what we had figured back in December of '14 and what we're figuring now. Contract would come in a little bit lower last year with his, but again, that's because he wasn't accounting for that gravel and he was a little bit lower on his tonnage of blacktop. So I guess we, I wanted to get the attorney's opinion a little bit. I mean, maybe we need to wait a little bit of review of that law, but the way I read that, the update is that we could actually get the quotes before August 1st because it talks about any contract entered into, I mean, if we, if we requested quotes in mid-July with the intent of bringing them to the council at the regular August council meeting.
We'll see because the effective date is one thing, but the reality is when you're going to get the quotes, you'd still be under the law at the part of bidding at that point. So there is some question on what we can and can't do. And I've actually got the note even on the agenda to double check, but the difference of opinion, safest course of action is the quotes are not dated before August 1st.
Right, so that's, so we could actually contact somebody in the last week of July and tell them, yeah, we want your quotes by August in time for this, the regular August council meeting.
That would be, that gets a little bit of weight on.
And that's why, I just wanted to make sure that we, that we had reviewed that law appropriately to make sure, you know, that we timed things.
Once in a while, then you break your way.
Yeah, so that's.
Not often, no.
Little bit of a long-winded story, but that's the whole point of that we've got the documents ready, we're over $100,000 now, but if we just can sit tight, the law is going to be changed and then we're still good to just go out and get the quotes and bring them back to you in August for your consideration. And that gives the staff more time in the meantime to talk to Folklife and get those issues planned out.
Yes. So there's really nothing that needs to be done on that.
Well, I guess the action we could take is if you're, if you are in agreeance with the scope of work we identified, you could approve these documents and authorize us, authorize staff to get the quotes at the appropriate time. And then we can just confirm with the attorney if that's the last week of July or the first week of August. We just want to make sure we time that right so that we get it here for your August council meeting and most special.
I still like to know that the scope is, or Folklife's going to participate.
Right.
Because that might change, they might just say, no, you can't, you can't go in or engage or something like that. So I think I'd just assume wait until.
We can table it until June.
Till we know what Folklife stands.
Get that out of the way and then we'll see. Not really losing anything by waiting there since we've got to wait.
I think I'm, it seems like I'm getting the general feedback though that you're okay with the documents as are, we don't need to change these at all, it's just more.
Basically, that's the work that needs to be done.
Okay, it's just we're getting the agreement with Folklife.
The thing is, like we said before, if you're going to do it, you're going to do it the right way, you know, and not skip.
Correct. We did assure them way back that we wouldn't assess them for paving that road, but we are legitimate in the ditching.
At the same time, we talked about paving the road, it would just hit the top of the hill to the excess on the east driveway.
Well, if we were going to go further, we wouldn't, I think we wouldn't assess them for that.
I would tend to agree with what the mayor's saying along those lines. The thing is, what we're talking about and what Fred's talking about especially is the culverts. With the culverts, we've never made any promises about that. And that's what we need to find out.
Absolutely.
If Folklife says we don't want to replace the culverts, then we'll have to come back and bring it back to you and say, here's where we're at. The city has all the right of way and we can still pave that and do that work, it's just the drainage part of it, we'll have to kind of see. And we get into a real kind of catch-22 because you hate to hold up that rest of that if you run into some.
Hopefully they'll work with us. Bottom line, a lot of that rainwater coming off on that side of the road is coming off of Folklife building and.
A lot of it is.
They are responsible for it.
Yeah, that's why I say hopefully they'll work with us.
And that's why I mentioned they would not. They would be getting probably more benefit of paving the rest of that street than anyone because they do have delivery trucks going in and out of there a lot. So if they're getting the benefit without paying there, it would be unfair that they were going to pay to handle their storm runoff.
When I talk to them, I think what I'm going to do is, when Wade and I talk to them, is we're going to kind of bring up, okay, here's the, what we talked about, these are all new people that were on.
Yes.
And I'm going to say, we talked about paving half of this road in fact, but we'd like to pave the whole thing and just, maybe we could just try to tweak that, maybe they'll help pay for some of it.
Now, you don't have to bring that up. As you said, it is new people.
You know, if you start with a high number, maybe they'll come down to, you know, 25,000 or something, you know, and we'll still get a, you know, good help with it. So I think that's what we have to do is kind of start up and work our way back with them because that road being paved is going to be a big benefit to them.
And the cost estimate we put together, we've got the paving broken out, we've got the ditching broken out, we've got the culvert broken out. So, I mean, you can almost go through on a line-by-line basis what they agree to participate in and, you know, and you can kind of identify that on a line-by-line basis and hopefully come up with some agreement that works with your cards. Okay, and we can just sit tight then on these documents, no further changes needed on them yet because we'll see how things progress.
Hold off for another month.
Yep. And in the meantime, we'll coordinate with the attorney to make sure that we get the timing right for when we are ready to go off for quotes so that we have that scheduled right down to what works best in the city's favor.
And so then we move on to legal, which is no new information. And so then we move on to legal, which is no new information. An update on the enforcement action on accessory structures located behind the post office building. You have not heard any more from them since the last time you talked?
I got a call from him, one of them today.
Really?
When I was eating lunch. So I, I rushed back in here and when I got in, he was gone. So I tried to call him back, left a message, never got back. Anyway, um, I was going to kind of, I guess, refer this more to Scott now, but what, it's been two months. And first they said they, they were planning on turning it down. This goes back, um, to what, January? I don't, when, when this was even brought. I don't recall exactly which month it was.
I'm not sure. I'd have to look.
So we went a couple of months there, nothing happened. Then a person called about buying it, like to use for a commercial business because it is, like, there's water and sewer and electric going into that alley. So anyway, let that, you know, play out. Let the guy talk to him. Um, I talked to him and he said he was interested in fixing it up. Okay, fine. Haven't heard anything. And this goes back March, April, maybe even to February. So now another couple of months passes and nothing happens. So what, I don't know what would be the logical steps. Send him a letter. Yeah, we start talking about a public hearing.
Right. I think you're to the point where you could say that the council's going to sires to essentially settle. Let us say it's going to be brought back at the June meeting and they'll start the public process from enforcement. And that's the easiest way.
Give them the deadline of contact us with, with firm plans by the June meeting or...
Yeah, I would actually do it by June one or something like that. And have a few little time built-ins.
Oh, you know, notice.
You could actually do it.
Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, so is that something that you would want to...
I can work with you.
Put together a framework of and then I'll send it out?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
So at this point, we don't need a formal motion to...
Not if you're, this analysis is going forward now because there's no actually rotating. I'm going to keep moving forward with the enforcement.
So then we would move on to old business and first item there being the draft of the new city logo, which we've seen a few times now.
So we brought this up last month. Um, we had two, two different design concepts. Um, the second concept, this one, or number two in your packet there, I think clearly has had more positive feedback. Maybe not ten to one, but it seems like pretty close to that. So, um, I think that that would be, that'd be my recommendation, I guess, would be to go with that. I mean, there's no specific time. One thing that we are trying to tie, we'd like to tie this into, Michelle will talk about this, or you'll see it with the paid site is the website. So it'd be nice to kind of have that, but we don't absolutely have to. The company that's doing the website does the template, kind of the front page you want, for lack of a better description. And there's the information on the template, we can change information. But like the design and the photos and stuff like that, we can only change so often, let's say a couple, three times a year. So the logo is something we're not going to be able to just plug in and out. But anyway, so I don't know if there's any questions. But I guess my recommendation would be to go with the second one, go with the second one. I agree with that.
There's Michelle hiding back there behind Wayne. I thought you'd left us. So, update on library activities and city website.
Or is there any more feedback on the logo or you want to go ahead with the second one?
I like number one.
And I was going to say, I'm with you.
Reason for it is boulevard of roses. We have nice big roses on number one where number two has two roses, but the shield, uh, stands out. And I think, uh, the shield overpowers the roses. So I'm looking at number one because it sets off the roses more than what it does number two.
I like the symmetry of number one. For lack thereof.
No, are you going to be the tiebreaker here?
I'd go either way.
I, I personally think the first one looks a little bit too busy with the smaller, more items there, the smaller ones.
Well, there's not more items there.
Well, there's one extra rose.
Yeah.
But I'm correct.
I guess number one, it kind of separated the roses from the, from the shield.
Yeah.
You know, so that's, if I was to say anything, that's one thing I noticed. Whereas the other one is, you know, it's kind of busy. More than a nice...
I have the order here. I pause it for a minute. I call my manager on.
It looks a little more modern, I can write, in a way.
And, and do we have anybody around that has grad weight from Kenyon College in Ohio? I don't know that we necessarily need to, uh...
The pounders, yes, the pounders of the city.
Yes, uh-huh, but they're not around anymore.
I mean, we're, we're only four people here. I guess that the public has said or the surveys have said tend to, almost tend to one, if you like, number two, well, just...
Yes, and how many have been in the survey?
Well, you know, the thing is, I guess we can take it, like, we have a COBA meeting in two fifteen. We could take it to the COBA meeting, you know, send it out to COBA and ask members what they think of it. So, I mean, like I say, you don't have to make a decision at a certain point, but we could do that and get more feedback too.
It's not a bit dollars and cents item.
No, it's, uh, so we could do that. I mean, that's certainly...
Am I going to move because we choose number two? No.
Brother Dr. Dabey is, yeah.
God's not here, so we could just bring it back next month. By that time, we'll have more feedback. So let's do that then.
Yeah.
That's for sure.
Or it's bad.
Put man in the newspaper for a contest. Choose.
Yeah.
Are you going to bankroll that?
And then we're going to get, we're going to get more of a bargain for it.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of ideas.
Contest for a new name for the muni. Did not go well.
Yeah. And I don't even recall that.
We could have the chief put it on Facebook.
Do you remember that?
Real doozies.
Hold on the logos.
Oh, yes.
You could easily set up a Google back site survey and we could link it to Facebook pages and people could vote that way.
What do you think, chief? Okay, how about, could we do that?
Go for it.
Put it on our, put it on the Facebook page.
Put it on, yeah, um, their Facebook page. We put it on the library Facebook page and people could just vote for the one they liked best. And it would be linked by email address, so there couldn't be cheating that way. You would have to have individual email addresses to be able to vote. So it wouldn't limit somebody voting.
And we'd have people stuffing it in the... We wouldn't, we wouldn't have Russian hackers, uh...
I would try.
Yes.
I, I, I make no guarantees, but, uh, did I definitely set up a survey? Did you want to start with website or library?
Um, we talked about, um, libraries, so let's go with that.
Can you pull up the...
I mean, in the, I'm only in the, yes. I'm getting there right now. Okay. I'm going to go over here to start. Okay.
Okay. Um, Mayor, Councilors, thank you for having me here this evening. For members of the public, I am Michelle Addy, the, um, library director here at, uh, the Kenyon Public Library. Um, Administrator Halsing and I have decided that maybe it would be a good idea just to do a review of library services of the last year to keep everyone up to date of what we've been up to in the last year. So this, uh, presentation is going to be all about 2017. 2017, we had eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight individual visits. So that's approximately about forty-five people per day coming into the library. Physical circulation, um, those are physical books, ebooks, or excuse me, not ebooks, um, audiobooks and DVDs going out or magazines. Twenty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-five, so about eighty-three physical items are leaving the library every day. Digital circulation, just over thirteen hundred. Um, we are in our eighth year offering ebooks and e-audiobooks. And I know that when we started offering those, a lot of people thought, here's the end of library services as we know it. Uh, people are not going to check out books. You don't have to come into the library. As you can see, eight years in, we are circulating about four items a day for our digital collections. So, um, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for people that are maybe homebound or bad weather and you can use those ebooks from home. But, uh, the trend is clearly stating that people still like coming into the library and getting those physical items. So, um, public computer logins, uh, one thousand five hundred and thirty, about six logins per day. Wireless internet sessions, almost nine sessions per day. Um, we have looked at numbers throughout the county and I have looked at numbers, um, for our internet sessions, our wireless internet sessions, um, at comparable cities throughout the Selco region, the Lebanon County southwest, eastern Minnesota region. People use our internet here in, in Kenyon. This is one of the only places people can get free internet, obviously, here in Kenyon, and it is definitely, um, needed in our community. So we do not keep it password protected. We let people, we let people know that you can access it twenty-four seven. We don't turn it off on the weekends. People can access it from the front of the building to the back of the building. So it is definitely something that is needed. Action, scan services, seven hundred and sixty-six, so about three uses of that, um, each day. And then reference help, one hundred and twenty-three. So that's helping people, um, with research questions as well as resumes, um, filing for unemployment, job applications. Now, we need the MinSure website, which libraries have definitely helped take over since the induction of MinSure. Locating tax forms, um, Minnesota does not send out tax forms anymore to the libraries, so everything is online. So we help people locate those forms. We also help people file taxes. Um, and then proctoring exams for, um, distance learners. So total services, we were just shy of twenty-nine thousand services right here. Next slide, please. Um, programming. We're really trying to push programming now, um, educational programming. So in 2017, we had a hundred and twenty-six programs. A hundred of those programs were dedicated to children. So, uh, in the fall of 2016, we started offering storytime twice a week because, um, we had about twenty-five kids and adults coming on Friday mornings. And when you get twenty-five, um, toddlers and preschoolers in a small area, I don't know how much learning is really, um, going on. So we split it up to Wednesdays and Fridays to keep a small group, um, to keep encouraging, um, early types of literacy. And so that has been very successful. Um, we have a summer learning program which we offer every June. And our book-a-lunch program is, uh, we offer that on Fridays and July and, um, August. And that's just a simple story time. There's no activities. It's just very simple, just read a couple of books and engage with the kids. And then we started passing readers. Um, so we have a certified reading dog that comes there on Sunday each year. And, um, it helps kids that might be reluctant readers, um, read aloud to, um, a certified reading dog to gain confidence in their reading. We had twenty-six adult programs. Um, we offer two book groups each month. Um, and then we have additional special educational programs. So program attendance was way up from previous years because last year we really started pushing programming. This year, I think we're really knocking it out of park. We're doing a lot different things and really getting outside the library. But last year alone, we were just over two thousand, um, people for program attendance. Just going out some pictures, um, some notable things that we did last year for the summer learning program. We had the International Health Center from Houston here. Um, we had over a hundred and thirty people in this room. It was amazing, kids and adults for that program. Our closing program for summer learning was Dad One Day. He is an international yoyo master. And so with his program, he actually talks about, um, the visits behind, um, being a yoyo master and, and the tricks. So that was really fun for the kids. Both of those programs were, um, paid for by library legacy dollars. So we're really trying to take advantage of all the grants, um, available, uh, for, for libraries. We're trying to partner more, so we had two author talks with the Goody County Historical Society and here the Kenyon Area Historical Society. Both of these books pertaining to World War I and were published by the Goody County Historical Society and they did a book tour throughout the county. And so Patriot Hearts, that book talk was actually done at, um, the, the Granderson House in September last year. And then we'd love to always done in the library in December, um, partnering with those organizations. And then, of course, we always had our annual Rose Fest book sale in August. That has become a really, um, we, we really started to make some decent money off of it. We get a lot of donations from the public, so we encourage those donations to keep coming in. Community collaborations, uh, these are area organizations throughout our communities that we have partnered with in the last year. Some notable ones, um, obviously, um, oh, the Kenyon Sons Norway next week. They will be in again and they always do, um, an annual presentation of Sitnamai for the kids, teaching of our Norwegian heritage here in Kenyon that we're all very proud of. Um, Kenyon Senior Living, we just had a program there two weeks ago, three weeks ago now, um, of a Chinese pipa, pipa player, um, that came. She's world renowned, has played all over. And so we invited her to come to the Sons at Home and play there. Um, Kenyon Area, Area Historical Society, as I mentioned, obviously COBA, the author talks with Goody County Historical Society. And then we do displays often for Goody County Health and Human Services, making sure, reaching out to those in our community that may not be aware of, um, services that are available to them. We are, um, in our final year of our contract with the county. So just yesterday, um, myself along with the other Goody County library directors met with county administrator Jeff Anderson and county attorney Steve Butcher, um, in Red Wing. And we modified and drafted a new agreement. Um, we just revised our current agreements. The libraries seem to be very happy with it. So we are going ahead and just trying to extend that agreement and we're proposing another five-year contract. We will be presenting next, um, Tuesday here at, in Kenyon. Prior to the regular board meeting, uh, county board meeting, we are now having a committee of the whole meeting, we do, um, an annual presentation each year to the county commissioners, just telling them about library services and what we've been doing, very similar to what I'm doing right now, just at all, at the county level. Um, so we will be presenting our annual, um, presentation to them next week. And then the, um, new agreement will be on their agenda for next week. Um, however, I don't believe that any action will probably be taken on it just because they've only had it for a week. They'll probably seen it today for the, you know, first time. Um, and I think there's going to be some questions on it, but hopefully it'll go through. Um, we agreed on it, you know, five years ago. Hopefully, we can just keep extending it. So, um, that's all I have for library services. And then we're going to move on to the website update. So I don't know if anybody has any questions about library services.
Yes. Is the county doing a better job of supporting the libraries?
Yes.
Yes? Good.
Goody County does actually a very, very nice job of, um, funding our libraries. For the last five years, we've been very happy with our contract. I mean, there's never enough money right, but, um, we're very happy with, at the level that they are funding us. All right, there's no other questions on library services. I think we'll move on to the website. So we have a couple, uh, I just chose one of the mockups. So this is just, again, things can change, but this is one of the mockups that Administrator Halsing and I have kind of gone with. This is the one we're probably running with for now, um, of what the site will look like.
All right, I'll reset back.
If you can resize it.
All right. How do you kind of do it? Huh?
It's slippery.
Yeah, it looks like.
It's so tough.
Why is that so thick? That is really weird. Okay, well, I'll tell you what. I'm going to go.
Might be a formatting issue because I used...
Oh, you know what?
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
It works. So this is not, nothing is set in stone yet, this is just what the designer sent back to us. Things can be changed, colors can be changed, background picture, but once we send it off to the
Gov Office?
Yeah, when, the Gov Office, once it's actually set up to
To one of the designers.
Yeah, like, to the actual design team, this is kinda set in stone then. So we need to make sure that things are done correctly before we send it off to the designer. So that's why we need this logo, we have no control over this logo, we have no control over background picture, once it's in the Photoshop area, or the photo stack area, those three pictures, we can't, she just change in and out, however, this option bar, we have control over that we'll be able to put in the pictures. And it does tie up into sliders, images, and we can change those in and out as often as we want. If we wanna do something seasonal with the background pictures, that is another charge, and we can do up to four pictures, I believe. And then you would have control over those four pictures that we can switch in and out at any time. That we chose to do that. But of course, that's one base charge. If you wanted to change up something with taking off those four pictures, another charge. So, we wanna be pretty sure that this is what we want on our main page, at least for now, and again, that's why we need to get that logo kind of squared away before we can send it off to the Gov Office design team, so we've been kinda held up on a variety of different things. One thing that we can do, because as you know, our current city website is not, not working well. We could go, yeah. We can go live with our beta site, and I will show you, this is what I've been using to just migrate content. You'll have to go back to all the way down, the last slide.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is that background on that front page someplace in Kenyon?
Yes, Joe actually took that picture.
Where is it?
I'm not sure, it's a street, it must be.
I can't remember, it's the river down by the bridge?
It must be, it was all.
It might be Curl, Curl.
Yeah.
That might be Curl, right by where the plant is.
If you click on it now, it should take you there, I'll get her.
Actually, I don't get out enough.
And then if you just minimize a little bit, okay, so this, it's very boring, and there's nothing fancy about this, but it works, I mean, you can see with that mockup before, it's going to be, you know, much more professional looking once we send it to a design team, this is just the beta, I mean, this is all static.
I gotta say, that's been really frustrating to me, the website being non-functional, because there are
Me too, because I was trying to take.
I've frequently tried to use it, then I haven't been able to.
Exactly.
Notice I'm coming in there, going through the big old paper book, because I can't access it where I used to.
Exactly. So their solution, or I should say their Gov Office's solution to us to at least get a functioning website, is we could go live with this beta site. It works, it's not pre, it's not extremely professional looking, but it works a lot better than what we currently have.
Microsoft has used the public and beta testers for years.
This is true. So, you know, this is just kinda, you know, there's no logo on it, I can't change any of the fonts, it's, it's not, there's not anything great about it at the moment, but, Mark, I don't know, do you wanna kinda flip through, go to departments or community links or something?
Sure, departments, you know, you could even put a little note on there somewhere that this is
Which is just a beta site for now.
Beta site, check back often for our comments.
We didn't.
Yeah, we will put some kind of note on that, it is.
Exactly, that might generate a little bit of traffic, people just, I'm just, I got it ready, yeah, under construction, I'm not.
Under construction.
That's what I was gonna say, something like that, that's great.
Well, it, um, so I've basically just been taking content from the old site, what I can get off of it for now, and, and just, you know, updating.
So like, I'm just looking at, or I'm just kinda going to some of the pages under departments.
Yeah, the third one looks pretty good so far. If you go to the library, that's just gonna take you straight to, I just put a link in to take you straight to the library website, so there's not dual information. It's just easier.
Municipal liquor store.
There's not a little light on there for now, picture.
Oh, it needs an update.
Yeah, it needs a full content.
Yeah, I'm waiting for other department heads to give me information of what they want on the pages, so we just got very simple information on there right now.
If you click on something and it goes there, that's great.
Yes, so, public works who really have nothing on there, that's exactly what was on the old website, we need to update that.
We need some pictures on this.
Yeah, if you go to gallery, there's some nice pictures in the gallery, so I have put that together.
Gallery, it's right there.
It has navigation, but, and again, I've given Joe credit, because they're all his pictures, right? We're very fortunate that we had some on hand.
Some that were this good, we had a lot of pictures.
This good, yeah, I mean, we had, we got some pictures.
A lot of them worked, you know, they just.
But not, not great quality, so, and I have more to put on here, quite a few more, we've been getting some from the public, people that I know that have taken some pictures, and they just, we're just not, I didn't think pictures are probably the most, you know, high priority item, we need more content than pictures at this time. So it's very simple, but it works better than what we're currently working with. I put in a Google calendar instead of the standard calendar on here, just because with the Google calendar, we can have several people as admins on it, and add information, and just taking it one person, and I honestly just thought the calendar that was on the site was just funky, it didn't, it didn't perform the way I wanted it to, so, we created a different calendar, but this one works. Do you wanna talk to them a little bit about just saving the same, like, city of Kenyon, or same website address and everything, as the past, we've gone through?
Well, we've had a lot of problems trying to get the domain transferred, we haven't actually physically started transferring it, but we had a hard time finding exactly where it started from, and we were somewhere in eastern Pennsylvania, and now we've kinda, over several months, come back to Jaguar, which is good. I wish we wouldn't, we wish we would've known it was at maybe Jaguar the whole time, but, you know, it's like trying to find a needle in a haystack, so. I think now, we're hopefully in a good position to just be able to get that City of Kenyon, wwwcityofkenyon.com, when people click on that, it'll just go right to this, because what it'll do is forward, in effect, to Gov Office, to their main, you know, where all their websites are. But that's how they all are. So, anyway, that was one of, one of our concerns, you know, was getting that transferred over, and I finally figured out and found out that, you know, I'm not even so sure we own it, and it's registered, it emanates from Jag town somewhere or other, since Jaguar, so. So, but we're getting, now it's to the point where we're hoping to have this up here shortly, not very.
At least get this data state, because.
Yeah, very soon here, so we'll have this up. So I don't know if there's any questions on any, but we just wanted to show you kinda what it looks like, and see if you had any in order questions or anything, and Michelle says this right now is just real, under construction is the key word, and it's gonna say something like that on there, because it's not done.
Under the pictures that you have, Michelle, is there a possibility, like, the background is color card?
Yes.
Down there, I got some real good photos of that.
Anything Kenyon related, I would love to put on there, there's no limits of what we, you know, from pictures, and I think that'd be wonderful.
Memorial Day, that might be a good one.
We'll change it, we'll round it on, too, just like the background of the creek, we'll be there for a while, but eventually it'll probably be roses, but that's something we're gonna change, maybe twice a year or something. But as far as the gallery goes, yeah, we can add anytime, but that would be great, we need to have that. Yep.
That'd be great, thank you.
All right, at least put you in.